Steve. I like the new camera. Ron. And it moves. Moving around the room.
He only he can't move, there's some of them move with the voice.
Yeah. Think that would be. Get some people. Give three rows back from hit the kids table for thanks to so.
All right, let's call the Wednesday, February fifteenth work session, lower side of the supervision session. Join me in the.
I'm glad you're here too. Thank you.
Right, is everyone had a chance to review the work session minutes of January eighteenth and January thirty first? Twenty twenty three. If there are no suggested corrections, changes or modifications. Take a motion to approve both as posted.
They'll move.
Second, move them back in all the favor, say hi.
Hi.
Hi. Both. Public Works Director, Mr. Jim. Good morning.
Good morning, thank you. It's an update on some projects and things that we're working on, uh, streetlight. The place that was still looking at a bit more to install. For that, um, park cameras. Uh, Camp Wawa and Heckler completed. For the straw part and lead part have the poles installed and the camera boxes mounted. Our electrician is scheduled to run the power to those. And then the, uh, the camera contractor will be back to install. Um, they were able to consolidate and originally planned for two poles that read part. We think we're going to be able to capture everything with just a single installation. It's quite much easier for everybody. A lot of those trenching. You have one less pole, one less foundation. So, uh, we're gonna try and see what how things go if we need to install a second at some point in the future than we will. So we're looking at moving forward with additional parks. Um, and I was able to procure some additional used signal arms from other municipalities. That were just the same as their boneyards. So it's it's turned into a, a nice little use for these for this old equipment and everybody's. Most municipalities just scrap them eventually because they hang on to them for the what ifs in case they get a knockdown, but the likelihood of it. The foundation being the same, the location, the bolt pattern, a whole lot, the the arm length, they have to be, there's just so many variables that, you know. No likelihood, it's. Yeah, you're gonna have a signal contact or install temporary anyway, and then, uh, you know, then you're gonna get reimbursed for them generally if it's a significant damage, you're gonna have somebody, some insurance company to go after for. For the replacement, so they just sit there. Uh, so we're utilizing, you know, so I was able to get, uh, seven and have an eight. Uh, you know, in in the ways. So, uh, we're looking at only look, you know, the two locations. Um, looking at Virg mill. Have one down at the entrance and then one at the upper parking lot there as we're, uh, looking to make that area in the upper parking lot our kind of community. We tried to do Rob's milk, but. The not being a knucklehead, not realizing, you know, the floodplain and how powerful all the nature is, you know, kind of. It took a hit during the the last story. Moving high and dry, so it'd be somewhere out of the way and try to make sure everything's cut and firewood length, so we won't have, uh, you know, residents. And they're utilizing chainsaws and bothering the neighbors and those kinds of things, so that's the reason for the second location of Virgin Mill. And then we have two poles that we're going to install in Auburn Park. And then, uh, one at Park Avenue. And that brings me to Park Avenue. But there's a diorank in front of you. That shows breathing free pole locations for Park Avenue fields. Um, one of the. Concerns that the, uh, the Harlinsville Eagles have is that, you know, during the ball when they use the fields at night, when you turn the lights off, if this. There's a security issue or a security concern that they have with. Um, being able to get to their cars safely, being able to see once they turn the lights off. Um, we had talked about installing, uh, some parking lot lights, um, there are concerns with the adjacent residential properties. Um, so. It's part of the whole procurement, I was able to get, uh, three fiberglass. Streetlight poles, huge ones that I think would be ideal for this location. Um, the first one near the the shed would be for for cameras. And then the other two would be for basically just security lighting. That we can put on a separate circuit with a timer having faced the shopping center, so they're not obtrusive to, uh, the residential development. Um, so the park board is kind of giving their blessing on the concept and they just wanted to run it past the board to see if there are any objections to. Us moving forward, there is no power at at this location yet. I'm trying to take advantage of the fantastic weather that we're having and while we're in the mode of installing these poles, just get them installed so that they're off and they're out of the way and they don't get damaged or whatever.
Do we have conduit run for the power?
We do.
Right.
The issue with the conduit is A, it was size too small for the length of the, uh, the run. From, uh, one thirteen. And also there were a number of bends that they had to make to, uh, to get around, you know, stormwater in with so. They're in this industry, they're behind the curve, they're doing forty five, forty. That was pretty fine, just to snake around an inlet and it's just too many bands for that size wire. And I met with our contractor, uh, electrical contractor, he said, there's no way I can safely. Pull wire through that without having any reasonable confidence that it's not going to get. The insulation's got not going to get nicked up and then, you know, that it's going to be reliable, so kind of abandoned that idea. Now we're looking at, hopefully we can, uh, at the, uh, the rear entrance for the shopping center. There's a transformer or some kind of a Pico device there that maybe we can pull power off of there, just cut across. Park Avenue and then utilize the existing conduit from there all all the way up to the park.
Got it.
So that's the the plan at this point, so again, I just wanted to get your thoughts on. On the the locations and the concept of what we haven't gotten as far as what size life, obviously they'd be LEDs. But with type fixtures, how many of that kind of stuff we. Uh, got a little bit of work to do, but I want to try to get these, if everyone's okay, will they at least get the poles installed for now?
Pretty good comment, yeah.
I appreciate that, you know, you already take account, put it away from the residential area, have a timer there, I have no issues with that.
Kind of they usually go, the lights usually go over the park port.
In the park?
Yeah, if we have any. We have.
Every you have. One light at least.
Right. So what would you imagine the time would be in these things? Okay, I believe we have four lights at nine or nine thirty.
Yeah, and I don't know how often they they have them once in a while.
It should probably be like a half hour after they had to turn the. Field lights off just to get them all.
Right.
It's a practicing up until at nine thirty. You know, so they can get to their cars safely.
Yeah, and reach out for the, you know, probably to find out what her schedules are to. All of them. Adjust accordingly, but yeah, definitely before eleven o'clock, I would think at eleven o'clock would be the absolute latest in my mind. So the board's okay with that, then we'll move forward with that. Agreed, man.
Yeah, yeah.
Great, thank you. Um, we're working on a number of starting new projects. Like we can give a. Part of our, uh, MS four program. Uh, we're obligated to do certain improvements. And, uh, we're looking at the community center property for. Uh, for a couple of installations or at least one installation. Um, the per queen watershed, like conservancy was able to procure a five thousand dollar grant. Through North Penn, from North Penn Water Authority. To, uh. Do they say it's something that they do on an annual basis and, uh, the the water check conservancy is, uh. Willing to do in a a rain garden installation. Yeah, right there, uh, this is would be this, the location, kind of the L shaped. Location, uh, along River Road adjacent to the stone parking lot. That grass area there is would be an ideal location for a rain garden. Uh. We looked at it last week. Um, CK is on board.
What are you picking up there though, because you're like a high end of the property?
It's not a whole lot.
Okay.
But there is, I mean, there is a, uh, pronounced swell in there, there's a pipe that runs under the. The little connector from the trail to the into the parking lot. Um, which are primarily getting is in road water and anything coming off that parking lot.
Ken, the only question from that was, Peter, obviously, a lot of people use that as a slow parking.
Correct, the baseball is not thrilled about people parking there.
Okay.
So they really don't want people to park there. Line well with their, I checked in with them.
I know I've worked there.
They want to encourage people to park for us if that's what gets.
So that we're looking at the, uh, an April, May install with, uh, public works doing a lot of the, uh, the grading. And prep work and then the conservancy to do all the, uh, full plans. Maintaining it moving forward.
There's immense amount of the cuts. Across that driveway from valley.
Oh, okay.
Ends up dumping.
Okay, I know that, yeah, obviously that swell on the other side of the driveway gets wet between the, uh, the dugout, the parking lot too.
Correct. Yeah, they both, they both get. Timing wise with, uh, April, May, that interfere with the baseball season? Yes, and you know, we wouldn't be working on the weekends whatnot, but I know.
Yeah.
Start to creep over there.
And we're gonna be daytime operations anyway, so if if there. Parking becomes an issue, then you just make sure all of our buttons are somewhere that that's not in comparison with anything that's going on, so. The other thing where what kind of started this, we were looking at a, uh, a larger project. Um, that's down near the, uh, the scout cabin and where we, uh. Just installed the playground.
Mm hmm.
This area in the corner there between the along the driveway and the trail. There's a significant amount of water that comes down through there, it's a it's a pretty, pretty sizable drainage area. Um. The project itself is is much more, uh, extensive than the, you know, obviously than the five thousand dollar, a water authority grant could handle. So at this point, we're looking at, uh, doing some preliminary work, preliminary work. Uh. You know, some perp tests to see what we can do there to try to, uh, make some improvements and. All this is the, uh, unique grid watershed, so it's beneficial for us from a MS four standpoint.
Good.
So we're we're working on that, uh, CKX is is, uh. Working on preliminary designs and, uh, activities for that at this point. It's the we're also looking to see if there's some funding that might be available. Um. Mike, could you go to Broadwood Pond please? But our conversations with Ryan from Ryan Bell from the Conservancy. Um, we were looking at other locations, we went out to, uh, Broadwood Park and the pond. To see if there was an opportunity to do something there, you know, whether it's, uh, some kind of a. A swell, vegetated swell or something along the, uh, the pond to catch everything that's coming down from the properties above that. Front along, uh, Bobby. Lane there, um. We have a significant. Problem or issue concern at this location, along with the some of our other ponds. With algae and duckweed. Um, we spent a significant time and amount of money trying to manage this. I just have a new agreement. That with, uh, weeds incorporated to do aquatic weed treatment for this pond at six hundred fifty dollars per treatment for application. So it's not an insignificant amount of money. Um, I had budgeted in my, uh, in our, the, uh, twenty twenty three budget. Excuse me, to install a fountain in this pond to try to mitigate the. The issues, um, and in talking with Ryan. He suggested a floating. Floating treatment wetlands. And that's what's. What I put in front of you is just a, uh. One of the the vendors for this. Basically, what this is, is just a floating island of plant material that absorb the nutrients. Phosphorus and the nitrate, I can get from the from the water. To try and combat the the algae and the and the duckweed problem. But these are. Ryan, you're trying to, uh. To to get one of these project, projects, you know, off the ground for a while now, and then he thinks this would be an ideal location. So you can see in the in in March, it's fine, but as we get into the warmer weather. And the challenge, one of the challenges that I believe with this, it's. It's directly downstream from the sewer with the charge. So, and that's what feeds that, we have a diverter.
I don't, you don't say.
Does that feed it? So, yeah, so there it's 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 a new green rich environment.
You just need.
Yeah.
Has Ryan installed these anywhere or seen them installed because I. While I. I guess supportive of the notion that this would imply, I guess. In. Put in something that ends up being a. Later.
Well, these these, he has not, from my understanding, but, uh, you know, he has contacts within his circle that that have. So I'm sure there are resources that we can contact to.
It'd be.
Yeah, they're not period.
Oh, perhaps somebody, yeah.
Yeah, I didn't, I know these. These are not made in three. Um, I think every three years the plants have to be replaced.
And how much cost it actually? Or two or three or?
We, I think I, uh. I think it was like about fifteen thousand dollars for, and it depend on the. The, uh, the, there were different different qualities of the, uh. The mats. The mats. So it depends on how, you know, if we can get them. Grant funding for for this as well, but yeah, I'd have fifteen thousand dollars in my budget for a, uh. For a fountain.
So when you harvest them, you know, obviously you have to harvest the nutrients out, the idea of what what do you do with them? The thing is, they could run off the storm system and run the nutrients back in again.
Yeah, I'm not sure, I'm not sure when the, uh. The end would be.
They would not eat.
Okay, yeah, but where do they, yeah, but if they if they die. Who are in there and eventually return the aquatic members who, you know, became, we want the nutrients out though, this is a nutrient uptake idea.
Yeah.
We want them out.
Right.
Of the watershed.
They wouldn't be, but where they would go.
Yeah, what do you, you try them out and. Then what happens?
Magic.
Yeah.
I'll see if it's, uh, right.
Yeah, really, I was like looking at underneath it.
I think it's relatively shallow, maybe like five or sixteen feet. So.
It was dredged. At some point, I don't remember. It was a long time.
It was.
So, yeah. Yeah, it's probably. So.
Some sort of creepy they can do in there is six hundred fifty dollars, like how many times a year would they have to do something like that?
This is a challenge, this one get needs, I mean, depending on the weather, obviously, but. Keep it. Algae and duckweed free probably means three or four treatments a year. Starting in, you know, like. Uh, early in the season. And then probably, uh, almost on a monthly basis or around six weeks. It's for a little duration of summer.
How, it kills, how effective is it? Um, obviously something you could do.
But I mean, especially if you have.
Simple, yeah, I, what I would talk to. Fires of the, um, the fountains in there. Um, they're they're really, especially for.
Which is behind that side, one fountain piece of. I think that's, they work rare in the town. And then. They you get outside of that and, uh.
Yeah, and they have different size, different sized motors, different sized balance for the the surface area of the ponds. So there's, you can size it accordingly.
Right.
But being an elongated pond, it might be, might to.
Yeah, I do like the natural option, I think they're just, I mean, this reminds me of, we were fish pond. Outside, you know, but they start taking over pretty good too, so it's a question of how quickly they grow, how much water surface do you end up with, things like that.
I think it, these are, they're models or units.
But.
Eight by eight and ten by ten, so you can kind of chain them together, you anchor them, anchor them to the. The bottom of the, uh, pond and, uh.
You slide them out.
Yeah, you should, you know, pull them out and replace them.
The park board's in favor of giving it a try, but is that when you agree on?
I also have a grant submitted, grant application submitted for ten thousand dollars for this pond. I have not heard from them yet, um, that would hopefully place up here as well.
But for here.
For the grant.
I'd be willing to.
For the show, I mean, this is on. Shot.
This is all.
And, you know, selling, uh, fountains, uh, big either since we don't power this pond and then we're running electric a thousand feet.
Yeah, that, yeah.
You know, so if this is something that would be viable option. Um, then I think worth giving it a shot before we spend the time, the effort, money to. Install the power and electric and any ongoing expense of that as well.
Right, it's the first time I've ever heard of something of this, you know.
Same here.
But, uh, I I I mean, I I'm not against it, I would feel more comfortable reading the more about it, possibly discuss it, yeah, next meeting. But I'm not against it at at the moment, so.
All right, we'll we'll move forward and, uh, try to get more interesting questions and see.
Somewhere else we're largely doing.
Yeah, find somebody that has done it. And the the water check conservancy, they're they're willing to do, um. Water sampling, so they can do it before and after analysis to make sure that it's doing what it's actually supposed to be doing, but. We see some real benefit from from our investment.
And the watershed wants the thing too, I mean, they're. On the way.
They're looking at these as, you know. All these projects as kind of educational project. School kids, we can have, you know, we have a relationship with the middle school where they do their community day, field day, whatever they call it. Where we have, you know, groups of kids coming to our parks and maintain them, so this is something that we could easily get. Um, school kids, classrooms in in bodily and. Also kind of, you know, that would also satisfy the educational component of our MS four. Program as well, so there's, there's, you know, a few tackles that that would be, it could be, uh. Benefited by a project like this. Okay, um, what do you know, and we've had, uh, several maneuvers. Uh, concerned about the, uh. Pedestrian crossing the water road at Bell Lane and Palm Hill. Um, there's a connection there, they're trailed on each side, they connect from. The Hennings Shopping Center to the school, um. The suggestion was that, you know, we needed a, uh, a painted crosswalk there.
There is no mark crossing.
Correct, there is no mark crossing there and there are no, there really is no accessible route across the water road. Um, the handicap ramps on. On the Bell Lane side are not current standard. And once on Palmview and on or cross, you know, are directed. To the other, the, uh, the median line. So, and also Palmview's private road. So what we're looking at is, um, doing the crossing on the the lower side. And having, uh, handicap ramps crossing Bell Lane accessible and current ramp crossing Bell Lane and then crossing Clear Road. Or Mike has the, the arrow. We've been talking about, you know, public works getting involved in some of these ramp installations, and so I think this would be. A good, uh, good, good place for us to start, so. We're gonna, we're gonna try to wipe this one off and get it done. So. That would be. Probably more of a summer project, depending on whether, depending upon, but that's what we're looking to either.
Are the intersection been surveying yet? You see, when you start tackling these ramps. Your, uh, friends to the left there will tell you that. There are technical and feasibilities that may occur in spite of the fact that it's relatively flat out there, so. The key is to start with a really detailed survey at these corners, so then. Your guys have a fighting chance at the end of having it, you know, code.
Technical detail for certain type of ramps.
I would start with that, but that's. My advice.
Yeah, I'm.
Yeah. To make that suggestion. Handicap accessibility is a lit- litigious issue throughout the country.
So understood, I mean, and we haven't done any, any of our own elevation work. Uh, yet either, so I think. Once we get a better handle on. On what the existing elevations are, then maybe that's, that's an avenue we pursue if we realize that we're gonna have significant challenges. Cause there are some, some slope issues, especially on the. Yeah, the upper, uh, right corner.
Mm hmm.
Um. The other two sides are. Are relatively flat. But that area there is, uh, slopes in both directions. So, anyway, we understand that there's, there's challenges, there's. If this one is not a straightforward. Um, necessarily designed installation, but, uh. Yeah, well.
And we did include this intersection with several other ones last year in the county CTP. Of a successful award at that, but this was one of those locations that we had. Tried to submit.
Yeah, we're, we've been trying to lump a group of these together to try to get funding for them and we just have not been successful. Everybody's under the same, you know, same kind of situation, or at least you've got. You know. Countless. You know, intersections where ramps need to be upgraded. And, uh.
Right, none of the.
Not enough money to go around.
None of these ramps meet code or even or even.
Not current standards, correct.
That was one question I was gonna ask, is this one in that group? I remember we did have a group of companies, but it.
Yeah. We can, we submitted a couple of, um, or just needed that.
Oh, you end up with the sign off at the end of putting install this to your mind, like having McMahon inspect them like they would have been a developer with installing them?
No, it's not my.
Yeah, I, in all honesty, I like the idea of trying to get these done and whatnot, but. I'm not sure that. I'd rather see the cost spent to do it properly with what how we follow the details for anybody else doing them, so that we end up with. What it's supposed to be for the wall wall, I mean, I understand what you're trying to do to try to save, I appreciate that and applaud it, but. I know if someone else came in to propose this as an all site improvement or something. They would have to do a full detail, McMahon would review it, they'd do the technical feasibility analysis and you'd have your, your sign off sheet so that. You know, when someone like him comes in to investigate because someone trips and falls, it's met standard since that's been done.
Yeah, no, you're not like a two percent cross slope on a sidewalk. The cloud there, there, uh.
Smart level, smart level.
Has to be one percent.
Kind of the length of the level.
Yeah, right.
I think.
Yeah, well, this on the other side, and that's where I think that it just. And it's a hard time, I'd say the same thing that we require, like the one that's gonna, I see that they're finally marking out for the one that you've been having, yeah, uh, the, uh. Project, do one of, and.
They want that they can track on you.
Yeah. I mean.
They've got a more, but they have to work that, they have to have a design, they have to have everything to standard, yeah.
Yeah, yesterday, just. Park entrance, grading issues and, um, just kind of go to an overall and on that work.
But.
And then that was one of the questions that I asked, because I knew it was, it was brought off. And, uh, so, yeah, so I was talking to the, uh, the representative from under Paul about that.
I drove by this morning, there's two white flags, look at the ramps going in on the.
He was there, you know, and just after he met, he was over there looking at it, cause I was, I went by to check that. I had an older version of the plan that didn't show the ramp side, but there is really a pose on the, uh. Lane side as well.
Yeah, it is possible that public works would still do the install.
Oh, yeah.
So I think the matter. Do the designs and meet the form and then have, then they'll have the right thing to install from. That would be my reference. Yeah, I know, whatever you'll take, additional sidewalk out, get the slopes right.
What I was doing, we need to, you know, and I talked to my guys about this as well, we need to take an extra AP to sidewalk now. Make sure we get, that's that's what we're doing.
When, when you say.
It doesn't make sure that it works, to make sure that we're well within compliance. So, um, yeah, we're, I mean. We understand that there are, there were. We understand that there are, there were, uh, tight specifications on these. Um, but I think we have the capability and the luxury, so to speak, of making sure that we can expand the project to whatever. Uh, length it needs to be expanded to make sure we can fly with.
And, and when you say you're gonna do the project, like I don't expect you to do a job, our public works to do a job where it's gonna be crazy slopes whatnot. How, when you said you were planning on doing it, did you plan on getting everything in the guidelines?
Oh, absolutely.
Right, so I mean, as long as we're still meeting the guidelines. If we have an opportunity to do it, because I know these happen since I've been on the trailer committee, that's one thing. I, and obviously a lot more than this, but that's one thing I've noticed that I hadn't noticed before is how many, I mean, we do need to update, especially regards to ADA and whatnot. But, um, I mean, I think if we have an opportunity and if we're, as long as it's done and nobody's gonna come and say, well, this isn't in scale, I mean. I plan, you plan on doing it in scale, best we can.
Every developer does. The problem is.
Yeah.
I've ripped out, we've had detailed plans drawn, and we've had to do it three times because. It, it's just, they're very challenging to build, so without an actual design. You're, we are, we are in danger of doing more than, I, I'm a hundred percent in favor of the public works department doing this. I just think we should just go the one extra step of, you know, we've got the firm that designs them or reviews them on a regular basis to. Do a quick design for us, so they have the best shot of getting it right the first time.
So then can we ask Stephanie to provide, propose, do that thing?
Yeah, absolutely.
I mean, it's gonna be survey and the three.
Yeah.
It's a couple thousand dollars when it comes down to it, right Stephanie? It's a couple thousand dollars.
Or less, or less.
And, and I would say the best part about it is the documentation.
Right, that's. We're covered, in some extent, so. So I, I, I fully feel that you'd be able to do this with no problem, but that extra step with the engineer. This has nothing to do with your capability to do it, it has to do with the order, what happens.
Yeah. Be trying to be as well as.
Yeah, it's great, it's still be. It'll still be very cool, yeah.
Yeah. Farming activities. Graining system, uh, along the perimeter of the park playground, um, that area was a challenge. And because of the drainage, it's low, everything drained right to the playground. So we just basically put a French drain, connected it to the existing system that actually already ran underneath the playground. Um, so hopefully that will help that area dry out after rains and also keep it from getting. Keep the wood carpet from getting rain soaked and turned into compost. So, um. Completed all of our sign upgrades for the resurfaced roads, um, we've tried to take advantage of the weather, starting our parks cleanup and doing mulching, so. Trying to get a jump on things, cleaning up around the township building. Um, right now we're, uh, aerating top dressing, parked out new fields, we're gonna seed and lime them. Um, I need to have a real frank conversation with all these illegals about the condition of the field once they're done with their, their season, so. Um, cause it's not fair, honestly, to, um, the girls across. Because the condition, they, that upper field where they practice, you know, they seem to, no matter how much I. Preach to them, you, you gotta move things around, you know, so you're not wearing, they're just creatures that happen. Well, they, they're wearing holes, you know, and then at the fifty yard line, there's just bare spots along the sidelines, there's bare spots. And again, there's nothing, uh. They're going very little at the end of the season to try and mitigate the damage that they've done. I get it, some of it's out of their control. They get a, you know, a rainstorm on a Saturday and they're playing in mud, not a whole lot they can do about it. They need to just be more aware of, of the impact there are. So. Um. Before you, I also have, uh. Memo for, to, for the board to authorize the sale of some additional items. Uh, one is two thousand John Gears, sixty three ton farm tractor with plow. And a couple of riders, various types and qualities of concrete forms, we have curb form, we have sidewalk form, we have wall forms. That have just been tucked into the corner. We use them occasionally, we'll keep a, you know, a limited amount for anything, any future need that we might have, but. We just, we, we don't do hundreds of feet of, of curving anymore, we don't do, we don't pour, you know, concrete walls. Uh, you know, we don't do hundreds of feet of side rail. And if the need would arise, we could always rent the cars. So it was an opportunity for us to clear some space and maybe generate a little bit of revenue. Uh, there's also, uh, some used playground equipment, and this actually came from the, uh, the Genesis Fitness Equipment that. Um. We replaced when we, uh, installed it at, at the community center, so there was a couple of spring riders, there was a couple of slides that were replaced. Um, they're just sitting there and I think they would, they would have some value on, on this exhibit. Um. The tractor and the curb, the, the concrete forms would probably bring, well, I know the cracker will, and the curb form will most likely bring more than two thousand dollars. At auction, so those will be, come back to the board for your blessing on the sale at some point, and hopefully at the, the March meeting. And then the other stuff that's, that's valued at less than two thousand dollars, just no further action required by the board. That's that, um. Chief and I, and actually Joe, were, uh. Met a couple of times with, uh, Enterprise, Enterprise Fleet Manager. Um, they are trying to, or have been getting into the municipal fleet management. Uh, arena, uh, where they offer a program that they manage the, the purchase and the sale of your. Your vehicles. It's mostly geared towards the lighter and medium duty vehicles, none of the, you know, the larger dump trucks would be applicable. To this program, um, but they claim that they can save the township significant amount of money. By, uh, knowing what, when to, to sell. Uh, and managing your costs and, um. The benefit, as they presented it, is that we get the benefit of a newer fleet. So essentially, everything other than our large dump trucks would be five years old or less. Because the turnaround, um, that, that's their model, they turn around quickly enough where, when it's still, their HP still has significant value in it. Um. And they charge. They, oh, the financing would be through them, um. They, they charge a fee for the, the, the sale of the vehicle. They have all the infrastructure in place and all the contacts to do all the purchasing. Um, their claim is that they can, through the source well and through the fleet discount that they get because of how many vehicles that they purchased. Um, it's equivalent to us buying it through Co-Stars. Uh, and then they also have the, the used. Our vehicle outlet market with various, uh, dealer network. And also auction sites, so they would, uh, determine which, which would be the best depending on the vehicle and, uh. You know, and, and market it and sell it, uh, any used vehicles that way. So we went with them yesterday, excuse me, they've given us a kind of a general proposal and a, a ten year plan. Um, showing what our, our fall savings would be. Uh, we're not ready to, to bring that to the board yet, but, uh, we're doing some investigative work on our end, uh, and. Possibly at the, the mid-month work session in March, they may be here to, uh. To present their idea, their concept and the, the idea to, to the board. I just wanted to be aware of what we're working on.
The expectation of it is that over time, our maintenance costs. Would drop significantly and our fuel costs would drop because we're, I'm keeping a newer fleet with a, you know, better fuel economy and so on. And, uh, over ten years, the numbers they control, they're using averages, municipal averages, not necessarily our numbers. But we've been looking at about a four hundred to four hundred fifty thousand dollar savings for ten years. And the result is that our need would be much newer, we're gonna be holding on to vehicles for ten or fifteen years. Which at that end of the scale, our maintenance costs are much higher. And, you know, fuel costs go higher because we're using less efficient vehicles and so forth, so. It's, it's an interesting concept, I think, you know, we all, you know, the three of us felt that there was. Something to look, look towards and, and see if it's gonna work for us, but we wanna see, uh, uh, point numbers on it.
Any of your colleagues? Uh.
Lower Mayfield and Bucks County and, uh, was Westchester Borough, I think. It looks like there are a lot of county markers, no good, and then they put a lot more municipal. Sure, I think you have a bigger bag at the bottom, I learned your fleet on it, right, you know, right?
For them.
Right.
With about twenty, I think they figure we have twenty-four vehicles that would be happening. The program generally twenty is their, their cuddle.
The, uh. The four hundred to four hundred fifty thousand dollar savings set if you update all your vehicles?
Well, that's the, that's the concept, is that over about the first five years, well. You know, we'll do, you know, we'll say five, five vehicles a year would go, we'll do this thing, and you start with the older vehicles, so by five years. You have all of your vehicles programmed, and that none of them are more than five years in. So the concept is that, yes, that, 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 you know, ten years, you save. X amount of dollars per year on fuel and, uh. And maintenance costs because you're not carrying vehicles. Especially on the, you know, public work side, uh, less so in the police, but when you keep. Unmarked vehicles a lot longer in the police department, we do patrol here. Uh, and part of the thing is that if we, you know, if we're, if we're doing, looking at unmarked or some of the public works vehicles, especially the trucks, the SUVs. You know, we keep those for two or three years because the return in used is much higher, you know, I mean, you're. You, they're actually showing that, you know, in certain instances, we'd be looking at, you know. Five, six thousand dollars returned to us over the initial cost of, uh, these, the vehicle.
Yeah, it doesn't fly in the ointment is the outfit. So anything that doesn't require significant updating, like the unmarked vehicles and, you know. Administrative big type vehicles, they, they would be, uh, two to three year quick turnaround because there's. There, you know, there's significant dollars to be made, we realize when, uh, and when you're not holding on to it until it has, you know, eighty or a hundred thousand miles. But, you know, so. When you've got, you factor in the outfitting, that's when it becomes a challenge, especially with the larger vehicles, the larger dump trucks, you've got, you know. A hundred thousand dollars in upfitting by the time you do a plow, fredder, you know, you know, uh, the dump body. And all the other hydraulics and everything else, so it's. That just kind of makes those, that's what makes those.
And the patrol vehicle as well. But that was actually, when you look at the, when you look at the price of a vehicle, the patrol vehicles have a significant cost as well. Uh. So, you know, these are all questions we haven't satisfactorily got answers to yet. Uh, but we're gonna be reaching out to some of the municipalities, seeing how it's working. I mean, I think Upper Mayfield's been four or five years, they've been in the program. Uh, Westchester's only been a year or so, so I don't know that we'll get a lot of information out of that, but. It's something that we certainly think it's. It's, it's enticing enough to continue the discussion, it's like, good to learn about it.
Do we spend a significant amount of maintenance? I think you kind of answered that, cause I know we put on like backup camera and stuff that. Uh, things, I was always surprised at how expensive some of the older vehicles, you know, particularly public works going to this bit, but. How much do we often have? Do we have a good maintenance cost for them? I mean.
I don't have any, you know, information, and I definitely do a lot of work to break it down for a bit, um. You haven't been tracking that, that's something that, moving forward, I would like to do. Now that we have a mechanic on board. Get some salt, get some program in, in place where you can, they can track that, but I don't have.
The police department has about twenty-five to thirty-five thousand, but depending on the year, because it could be, you know. A transmission cost, and all of a sudden that's a big nut item, that, that your, your budget goes out the window. But looking at over the past four or five years, it's somewhere between twenty-five and thirty-five thousand for the police. Uh. You know, I think it's the, the public works budget is structured a little differently in that all of the equipment is in that maintenance line item. Backhoes, you know, graders, all that kind of stuff, so they have to be able to pull those numbers out of there.
Yeah.
And that number is significantly higher, it's probably more like fifty thousand dollar range for a year. That means, but we'd have to pull out the equipment side of that and figure out that, that's one of the reasons why we said we just need to kind of. Look at our numbers a little bit deeper and, uh, and again, talk to some of the other municipalities. Cause that outfit, I know, that, that's a, both of their concerns, because it's a, a significant number when you look at the cost of the vehicle itself. The outfit is, uh, significant. You're almost doubling it, it'll be a pro- pro- purchase a vehicle and then the outfit for the police and for the, the trucks is almost another vehicle.
Appreciate the research, Charlie.
Yeah, Charlie, I mean, Chris is a colleague of both of you, I think. Having been around a long, you guys do a very good job of managing our fleet the way that we're currently doing it as well, I. I mean, it's nice to hear that there might be a way to squeeze more efficiency out of it, but I think it's doing about as well as we can. With trying to, you know, we've gotten the habit of replacing vehicles soon enough that they don't become the, uh, the maintenance nightmares that. And you try to keep a public works truck for twenty years, yeah. Yeah, you're changing your tail after a while. Yeah. One of we just can't get rid of, uh, so, alright, thank you.
That's all that I have.
Stephanie, Stephanie, can we, uh, ask you to? Okay, hold back for a minute, uh, Doug Johnson is here, I, I notified you guys earlier in the week. He would like to discuss, uh, what's going on with the library, funding issues they're having. So rather than go through all that traffic stuff right now, Doug can do his presentation.
You mind if I stand here?
No, pretty sure.
Old habits die hard. Uh, first of all, let me say I want to congratulate Kent on his appointment. And I want to congratulate the rest of the board on his appointment. Uh, one of the, the things that I think has always been great about this township is. Every time you fill the vacancy, you upgrade the board. And appointing quality people to fill these chairs is such an important factor, and you guys do it as well as anybody. Um, I'm here this morning as, as your representative to the library board. As I'm sure you're all aware, there's been some funding issues that have come up, uh, last fall, um. So I want to basically bring you up to date on what's been going on and then talk about where we go from here in the future. Uh, to do that, I'm gonna start with some history, as I feel pretty comfortable that I'm the oldest person here. Um, and my history goes back to nineteen eighty-five, when the library was operating at an old church. Over in Telford, with a single library and no computers and a circulation that's probably one twentieth of what it is now. The Saderton Area School District approached the library board at that point. They were looking to find a new use for the Telford Elementary School, which is where the library currently. Uh, is set up, and an agreement was reached. Um, unfortunately, the library didn't have a lot of bargaining position. Cause the agreement is that the building was deeded over to, uh, the public library, but there is a deed restriction. Uh, in the deed that says if we stop using it as a library, it reverts to the school district. So in other words, we can't sell it, take the money and move the library somewhere else, it's. For all intensive purposes, as long as we're there, it's ours, if we move, it's not. The original funding that was set up back in nineteen eighty-five was. That the school district would pay fifty percent of the operating expenses that were not covered by state aid. And the other municipality members of the school district would divide up the other fifty percent. And originally that was done based on just pure budgeting, budgeting items. Eventually, a number of years ago, it was changed to a flat mileage. Um. And that went along pretty well for a number of years, uh, until the Saderton School District decided they were going to back out. And that was about maybe fifteen years ago, and they withdrew from the funding arrangement, so that we lost fifty percent of our operating funds. In one fell swoop. And about eight years ago, uh, Upper Southford followed, they were not willing to. Uh, pay the taxes any longer, uh, to support the library, so they withdrew. So now the library has, since that time, basically existed on the remaining member municipalities. So obviously, our income has been going down for some time. Which brings us to the current problem. Uh, last fall, it came to our attention. That Saderton Borough was discussing during their budget processes. Uh, reducing the amount of money coming to the library. And they were proposing to do that by reducing the. And they were proposing to do that by reducing the millage. Um, and we found out about it and we barely had time. To go to their last work session before they passed their budget. Um and basically, uh. Had some pretty heavy discussions with them, as a result of which they, they did reduce their millage, but they compromised it. No, but they reduced it less than what they were going to before that last meeting. Then Telford came along, they, we did not have any notification at all that Telford. Was, was going to change their funding arrangement and they did two things, number one. Is they took it off a millage, no, it's, it's just a budget line item now, so they can make it whatever they want. Year to year, they're, they're not locked in. Uh to a millage arrangement as the other remaining municipalities are. And the second thing is, is they did. Cut the budget considerably for this year. Um Saderton cut their library funding uh by almost nine thousand dollars for twenty twenty-three. And Telford cut theirs by about seventeen thousand five hundred, so that's about twenty-five thousand dollars we lost. Uh with, and again, with no advance notice whatsoever. Um, there was a public meeting at, at Telford two weeks ago. And about a hundred people showed up in support of the library. Uh there were some pretty uh intense discussions. Um and no, I, I mean, there was no. Solution reached other than to simply say we would continue to discuss it during the course of the year. One of the problems is. Uh and as a library board, we now realize that we cannot just. Assume that the municipalities are going to continue to honor the agreement. In other words, we got no advance notice from either Saderton or Telford that they were, they were going to do this and we have reason to believe. That Telford's going to keep cutting it back. Um, now, why is this happening? Uh from what we've been able to learn, two reasons, number one, and you'll appreciate this one. Uh there is a concern in some of the municipalities. That they need to provide more funding to the fire companies. To keep them in a volunteer arrangement, uh which the concern is if they don't increase the funding. To the fire companies, eventually they'll become professional companies, which means the taxes will go up even more dramatically and you guys understand that issue. And, and I would not stand here before you and tell you that's not a valid concern. The other issue there is there are some national organizations that are pushing. To control either defund libraries altogether. Or to control the funding of libraries so that they can control the curriculum that's offered. Um and I have no information whatsoever over which of those two issues is the stronger one. Uh but those are the two issues that keep coming up. Uh that we're being told from other municipalities and I had a long conversation with Mike Hall. Last year, when, when Saderton was first considering it and this is what Mike told me and we've since. Got it confirmed from other places. So anyway, that's, that's what's driving this idea of cutting the library funding. Now, let me stop there, any questions so far?
Going into this year, yeah. Uh is I think I know where you're going with the big picture issue, let's talk about the small picture issue.
Okay.
Twenty-six thousand five hundred dollars coming out of the library budget. Are you in a position to absorb that at least for one year, or does that put you into a deficit problem immediately?
We were in a deficit problem last year.
Okay.
And we were able to cover it a- as you also are aware, we have had. Um. A, a committee, called a committee, uh it's called Friends of the Library, that's been fundraising for a decade. The purpose of those funds is they have been segregated to build a new library at some point in time. That has not happened, obviously. Uh because most of the estimates that we've received. For land acquisition, construction and moving costs would be in the area twelve to fifteen million dollars, we don't have that kind of money. So unless somebody steps forward and says, here's, here's a five acre tract of ground you can have, it's not gonna happen. But the library has about one point one million dollars set aside in that capital reserve fund. We dipped into it for about ten thousand last year to meet operating expenses and we can do that again, now do we want to do that? No. But are we seriously jeopardized in terms of current operations by losing twenty-five? I can't say that we are.
Okay.
I wouldn't tell you that. Um and I'm not here this morning to ask for more money for this year. So that answers your short term question.
Well, or if you needed a bridge load or something on that line, that there's other things you could talk about.
Right.
Against future payments.
Right.
So we've done that, you know, in the past on ambulance and other things.
Sure. Now, we have the money, it's just we're gonna have to move it from one fund and into the other, but we're not. We're not gonna jeopardize operations for this year.
This is the structural question for.
Correct, right, now. Back in nineteen eighty-five, I don't know how many of you recall this, but basically there was a task force. Funding committee set up. Where each municipality sent one of their supervisors to this committee and Doug Gifford ran it for decades. Um and so when funding and, and they didn't meet on a regular basis, but when funding issues came up, Doug would call a meeting, get everybody together. Uh but it hasn't met for a while, in fact, I think the last time they met was when Upper Salford pulled out. So it has not been an active committee for some time. One of the things that we as a library board want to do is to revive that committee this year. Because we don't want to wait. Until in November and December this year and find out. You know, that, that we're losing another twenty-five or even fifty thousand dollars without any advance notice. Um, you know, we were able to marshal in a week's time, as I said, about a hundred. Residents that came out in support of the library and we're going to continue to try and do that. Um but we need to have some ongoing discussions with not just Saderton and Telford. But with everybody that's still involved. Uh to plan ahead because ultimately we're talking about the long-term viability of a public library. Um so I guess my first question to you is, would you be willing to at least participate in that task force funding to appoint? Uh a supervisor to sit on that, on that committee?
Of course, yeah, absolutely.
Okay, okay, thank you, I appreciate that. Um and we're hoping that everyone will agree to it, and again, I'm not suggesting that's, that'll result in a miracle solution either, but. You know, we need to talk about these things because, you know, if, if we're in a position where each year they keep cutting back our funding. At some point, it's gonna be a real problem. Uh we're not there yet, but I appreciate that you asked that short term question. Okay, so that's. All I wanted to do today is bring you up to date on what's been going on, each of the board members will be meeting with their municipality. Over the next thirty days to pretty much do what I just did. Um so that they're all up to speed and if they all agree to revitalize this task force funding committee. Then we can start working on that sometime, may not be next month, but sometime uh by this summer. Because we want it up and running so those discussions can take place before budget time. Alright, I thank you for your time this morning, I thank you for your continued support of the library.
No, just, I mean, at least for myself, I know, still the same way. Upper Salford will continue, at least the makeup of the board is constituted as it is, to support this library. And we want to be part of the solution for whatever those short and long term issues are, and I think. You know, you've got the task for funding issue discussed, but you also talked about the longer term capital discussion. And I think there's been a lot of discussions going on in differing areas, you know. Friends of a library have been doing it, Jim Stier is doing a great job with it.
Yeah.
But there may be more of an outreach that's necessary for that, so that there are options and opportunities that could be discussed too. And a lot of it be put in a bigger capacity once we get the smaller issue.
Uh sure, because the, I mean.
Sort of run together.
They do, I was just gonna say that, they dovetail because the problem is. We can't continue to look at a major expenditure for a new library if our operating funds are in jeopardy. And that's where we find ourselves.
Right.
Yeah.
Different, the figure new library may also result in different funding streams.
Exactly right.
That, that, it's circular in uh that's why they're coming into and uh.
Well, we've talked about a- as an option, just conceptually. About the idea of getting away from municipal funding and start charging membership fees to individuals. To use the library and that it may come to that at some point, particularly if, if. The municipalities continue to cut their, their pay, so anyway, yeah. Oh yeah, yeah, you, you know, it's, it's amazing because. You know, we tend here in Lower Salford, we tend to look around the neighborhoods and say, you know, this is a pretty high rent district. And it is. But you start getting over into Saderton and Telford, it's not in a lot of places. Um and so what happens is, you know, for a lot of the kids in that end of the district. The public library is absolutely essential, I mean, it's not just a bonus, it's essential. Uh we still have hundreds of families over there that don't even have a home computer. And the only computer access they have other than in school itself is at the library. But so there are services that, that can't be duplicated. In the public sphere if the library closes its doors.
Suddenly, children, the senior population, I know whenever I've been over there with my kids getting books and whatnot. There's always a number of seniors at the computers, they're getting help from the library on how to do the search, they're looking for things all on other. If they may not have anybody else in their life to give them that resource.
Exactly.
Yeah.
Exactly. And we're trying to, to develop other programs that deal with. You know, minorities and their particular concerns and in terms of education support. Um so that those are ongoing and it, and becomes even more essential, as I said, uh as the district changes. Um, you know, we need to deal with that. I'm going to leave with Holly, this is a. A funding diagram that shows each municipality, first of, first of all, it shows the, the state funding. Um. The money that, that the library itself raises just for operating funds, not capital. And then what each township uh puts in and this, this is the budget says we're where for twenty-three. But I just thought it might be helpful for you to have. Yeah, okay. And again, thank you for your time.
Somebody's been there since nineteen eighty-five. I, I appreciate it. Thank you.
Alright, back to Stephanie, circle back. Make it quick.
Traffic signal technology design proposal. Um if you recall, um the tent was awarded the traffic technology grant, the upgrading the adaptive to adaptive. There is some engineering involved that was um. Included in the, the grant application and part of the match. Um requirements, um so that was in front of you, this is essentially to. Update and, and do the system permit plan revisions at each of the intersections. Um when we were preparing the grant application, this was what was uh discussed with. And that as a required task, um with the, the process. Have to was, um. To be able to have a, a system plan that. Excuse me, um that includes, you know, those, the cycles uh signal information as a base. Um so that being said, I think, I'm not sure if the township has received the grant agreement yet, uh for. For execution, but given that it was announced in the fall, I would think it would come through. Process where you sign. So this is an anticipation as it's granted. Executed and then go with the design process and then I would say that, um. We would, there's not a lot of engineering in the second phase grant, which is the, we let go that was recently submitted. So if the timing all comes together, that grant would be awarded, we would. One project. Um yeah, guys. Um I would say that the, the task fees are consistent with the grant application with what we estimated. When we submit a different application. That. So. We are requesting.
If we have any uh future traffic lights, uh I mean, I know it's not connected to this, it's just. Build each one with this involved.
So depending on occasion of the thing, uh it may or may not be. But so for instance, um the two signals on Wamble Road are going to be part of the system for. This system, um but if there was any, uh we're trying to extend this system, we had to start them to trying to extend it. Oak and one thirteen. Eventually, and that's a goal, and then the landis signal and down the letter X, so the. A adaptive system would be extended.
I think Kevin, your question is like, say we get the grant for the turn of garage, it will be built. With one hundred percent importance with this, okay. Thank you. Do you have a motion?
Keep in mind, there's. Keep in mind, with the turn of. There's not a connection. Leave the minutes a matter of few times to the connection, but it would be.
The proposal for traffic signals designers, T S T adaptive, e adaptive.
Uh so moved, dated January tw- thirty-first, twenty twenty-three.
I moved that second in, in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Vote say nay. Nice hat. Little bow flashers.
The second.
Four.
Second proposal is for the school zone, uh lighting warning device. Design services. If you recall, this is, um we're submitting for the month, both twenty forty grant applications. Do highlight the fact that the grant program allows for the services and engineering done prior to the grant being afforded. Uh to be used for your match, so there's, uh this, it's spelled out in particular that any. Time and effort you will put into developing the plan or construction is allowed to be of your local match. Which is why I would present this. Um, uh the, even, even submitted, so, um I think the idea is we want to let them know in the application. After it was committed, we will be hearing that it's.
This is the new design with spike school album, the eighteen fifteen months out.
It's all just a phrase, the user thing, there's nothing new, it's just the new new. The nineteen seventy topics program, I think, may have installed that we have, so, does any inclusion engage?
No, and, and it's up, it's up. Also, they, they considering to design it and, um. Resolution, it would accommodate any future projects, we're gonna locate everything. Future of the project. Like lane through.
We'll take uh motions to approve McNann's proposal for flash and warning device design services for the month of twenty forty. Pool zone flasher design data, February tenth, twenty twenty-three.
So.
Second, move in second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye, aye.
Vote say nay. Two for two, Steph, give her one, thank.
This is a group. Um that's the thing, they were a real. I will, uh we presented this at the last trail sidewalk committee meeting, um. And received um direction from the committee as to how to proceed, um so what is in front of you are the two. Um alternative alignments, um I'm showing on each side of the road and on the backside is the cost estimates. For twenty twenty-four for each of the scenarios. Um what you're gonna see here is on, on the plan, the area that shaded with the diagonal. Is ultimate right of way that has been offered, it was asked for dedication. So I know Holly and Andy are coordinating on getting. The status of any of the acceptance of those areas. Um if they have not been previously accepted, we'll work on. Uh moving forward with some, obviously to accept those areas. Um so that will allow the sidewalk to be able to be picked in within the right of way on either side. Uh what I would like to say next is that exhibit A. Has one location of concern, but the trail sidewalk committee did ask. That we can forward township staff and talk to that particular property of her. Um about the location of the sidewalk because it is close to their, their structure, um but. It would be, it would be within the right of way, um as well. So one advantage to this side of the road, the cost is less, um because really having a green. um, installation that would be required, there was a small section of curve, but the road in that segment is already curved. Um, and there is already drainage facilities located there. So, um, that being said, it's really primarily sidewalk installation. Um, other side of the road, second page, um, we have a few more, um, projects, I'll say items, we would be competing to do a little bit of pavement and curving to connect the existing curve on each end, um, absent drainage cross pipes. One assumption this makes is that the system that is existing on the other side of the road could receive some of that additional drainage that was eaten by the cross to it. I cannot answer that question right now. I don't know if that is the case. Um, so if there was any other basic needs on the other side, I would have to add that. Um, person may, they can receive it. Um, I think there are some potential impacts to maybe, uh, some additional trees on that side of the road. And in general, the cost is just going to be greater because of additional. It can happen. One thing the trail sidewalk committee did say is like the idea of it on, knowing it's close to the one, the bottom side, um, to basically reduce the number of. I think, Kevin, I think that was what you talked about is from the school, keeping people on that side of the road as they head down. Uh, one of the comments that we received, and I know each and Kevin honestly, he read that.
I think the concern this was, it, it was unanimous as far as I, as far as I understood the committee saying that, you know, con- concept A was the preferred alignment. You know, depending upon the disposition of the property, and we don't want to get into a battle with our things. So approaching Stephen Mayhew and letting, letting him know that this is a potential, uh, project might not be a bad place to start.
Question for you on the, the budget for these. Are you assuming you're not putting concrete apron and sidewalk through the driveway to break? But you have to tie the concrete to an asphalt driveway and.
Oh.
Yeah, but, yeah, but there's only like two, like you land this one where this is like, uh, and good, again, it's closed. You know, if you're having a flat sidewalk coming into a driveway that slows out like this, are you replacing the driveway? How are you dealing with that?
Right now, we're just showing sidewalk, the sidewalk, I'm into the driveway. So if we were going to.
You understand the hearing of high A, yeah.
These roads are relatively flats, I don't, it's not like you got to pull the central and down.
It's, 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 that can be a tough transition though. Versus the right way to do it is to put a sidewalk and a ramp in for everyone. I mean, that, that, ju- just as a thought. The other thing, uh,
But that.
The other question is, I know there's a couple of trees that would be taken out. Would we, like particularly where, from a, a streetscape standpoint and whatnot? Have built in some money for putting in some replacements, street trees along the sidewalk particularly. I see we've got a couple of areas where you'd identify to go around trees as alternatives. Right. Where maybe more efficient to plant, take the trees out and plant ten trees or like, and create a streetscape, a street tree, streetscape along there.
Um, we would.
I, yeah, I personally, I think that you guys said that's the correct side of the street to be on, just making, making the hurdles for it.
Obviously one price.
Yeah.
Right. But the other one that we've discussed is, I mean, how many times see the problem there.
But.
From the school with the curves, you might as well have to go down where.
Oh, absolutely.
That was the consensus.
Oh, I would agree.
I think one other comment, also that, um, price being one of them, they open up some additional opportunities for different green programs.
Yeah.
It's. I love it, but.
And, and in regards to trees, there's a lot more on the top too. Oh, yeah. Well, I was gonna say on either one of them, the budget would, should re, should account for.
Sure.
A certain amount of replacement trees, just in good practice, I think it would make sense to do that.
I would, as, second, since there are utility pools, what the, the green, we're trying to avoid utility pools, there's, lines on, uh, the bottom side there, in the utility.
Yeah. Water valve or someone, yeah, yeah.
So, you know. What we need to do, working out the right of way and moving forward, I just wanted to at least present this.
Just if you wouldn't mind, just do a, a quick look, just a further look on the, the detail of the driveways, whether you build that sidewalk up or you're dipping down the driveway with, or you may just have to have some more money in there for driveway restoration. It'll be easier to pay a little bit of money to repay part of that driveway and get it to the right elevation than it would be to.
I think the street tree.
Yeah.
Sure. All right. Any else from anyone? Going once, going twice. Doug, you're done for today.
We're pulling, we have to walk.
Once.
I had to check. I had, I had apologies. I, I had some of the degrees, I'm waiting.
Please, uh, we also discussed, we had a presentation on the letter, the, the trailer sidewalk committee. Have a lot of good discussion, a lot of input from the committee. Um, really, the only thing I wanted to mention here today is that one of our next steps is going to be staple their interviews with the property owners. And, um, in that, in that general area, we have a good list of people that we're going to be starting with. If there's anybody in particular that anybody here would like us to make sure we include, please reach out and let me know that. Um, we will have a preliminary list of the types of questions we will be asking them. More so in case you receive any phone calls, but I wanted you to be prepared in the next. Um, that's when we're really good. Be starting those staple their interviews, um, and continuing to advance, uh, the study itself. Uh, we will get out something to focus on what they, um, the status of them. So, uh, if you have any input of people or businesses, entities that you want to make sure we speak to, that maybe have, if that, if you people reach out, um, and want to be, uh, communicated with, we would be that, um, please.
Will do. All right. That's it.
Thanks, Zach.
Thanks, Tom.
Very grateful, sir.
Back to him.
Okay, uh, hiring process, our application, uh, period is still open until March ninth. Applications are low. That's something we're seeing across the county. Uh, not that surprising, but we're also all staying fine. Uh, the consortium, fifteen municipalities, only got about a hundred applications, that's correct, believe well. So, um, we'll, uh, respond accordingly, like we did last time, if, yeah, do a long process, interview, qualify people, and then wait for more to come in, you know, just get them into the queue, uh, rather than waiting until the very end.
About how many in so far?
Like ten. But it's, our normal application period is like three months. We made this one like seven weeks, uh, to see what we can get, we can always extend it. Which is what we did last time, but that period lasted about eighteen months total, but that list was getting real stale. Uh, so there was no more tipping, you know, to get back up to nineteen. And we're, we're down to one out injured and the one we're trying to rebuild. Uh, bus patrol, we've discussed a few times, there haven't been more meetings at the school district, the, uh, issues we're dealing with now. Uh, PSP is so concerned about that, uh, civil, uh, aspect to being, uh, responsible for the court voice, uh, they have backed out Commonwealth line. Shell to address any reimbursement, but they're, you know, what they're finding out is the hurting of cats that are dealing with the M D J system and the local magistrates. Every one of them is a Supreme Court justice. Every single one. And they didn't anticipate that hurdle. Uh, so they are talking to our local M D Js that would be affected by this whole district geography, which also extends to the Bucks County. So they hadn't done their due diligence, I'll say. Um, so, so, uh, it's awful.
One of the interesting things we could find out was that, I think, distribution was different, is different than initially old to us then, which make you, initially it was two fifty.
We were hearing there was only a three-way split at first. We were getting so, you know, upper prob is a sprint forward, they, they had just recently started, and so there was a meeting to, to address any concerns, and they were saying, well, the, the, uh, the vendor, there's no upfront cost to install. They, they're going to hit every bus, a hundred thirteen buses. And they're about a third of the way installing all these cameras. And so they, their plan is zero upfront, but we'll recover through the fee, you know, it was a three hundred hour fee, and they were taking two fifty, the school district gets twenty-five, and we get twenty-five for packing through the work. So at this meeting, they grow up a slide. Now it's a four-way split, uh, why did it change? Well, it didn't change, it's always been a sort of, okay. So the vendor's still taking fifty percent. One fifty. School district is taking uh, a, a third, which is a hundred, which leaves fifty that would be split between the P Ds and a state uh, grant, uh, you know, with a program that would take the fees, uh, for future use. So we're still at twenty-five, but the school district would be getting four times that amount. And again, we're doing the work. So discrepancy would point it out, but, well, to, to, I mean, and, and there was a separate school district meeting that Joe and I attended, where that was brought up, but I would say not addressed and acknowledged. But, uh, but they, so I don't know how negotiable that is.
We don't participate, does, it doesn't work, correct?
I'm sorry.
If we don't participate, it doesn't work for them.
You know, they never really said with PSP putting the whole program on hold, whether they can continue without their support, uh. So they originally would say, once everybody's on board, and once I hear always, never, everybody. Okay, let's see how that, what could possibly.
Yeah.
Help or sourdance. Oh, answers.
What's our neighboring municipality takes on? So they signed up on it officially or they're just curious?
Well, I've had one municipality suggest they would take the video and issue traffic expectations in lieu of the civil. I don't think the vendor's going to go with that because that's a different funding stream. Yeah. So I don't know, I didn't, well, how, do you think that would last? Cause you're signing an M O U, that you're going to go by this. Now there's a supplemental, and, and prior to the first, saying that they'll come up with a reimbursement plan if you incur court costs. So it's a mess.
More to come.
Sounds kind of like, wait, see. Uh, the only other thing I, um, there was a request for crash history at Oak and Maple, um, earlier this week. I have some, I don't know, is there any questions about those numbers?
No, I was, I was curious. I had, uh, some people reaching out to me as well, and I know we were talking or brought up before an idea of a, or a, a roundabout there too. So I was just curious if the crash, but, uh, I said four, I thought they were reportable.
Since twenty twenty.
Twenty twenty. Is that higher than two?
Too reportable and too not, you know, in three years. It's not what we, oh.
Doesn't rise to that level of.
That's why I didn't have anything else to say. It's to answer the question, right? But I appreciate that.
The good news is we didn't put a signal in there twenty years ago.
It's not.
Insurance company would not pay for it.
I was just curious, as I see the, uh,
Especially you're, you're looking at, what I'll say, probably likely, Maple one thirteen being signaled. You gotta see that impact is. Something like that. Aside from Rich Delts assuring me that traffic would back up the miles, if we did a four-way, it's three, maybe four cars. And what, you know, with the, uh, housing going in, and we've seen that, and nobody's reported any traumatic increase in the queue at a four-way stop.
With the redevelopment of the insurance building, that might play a role.
Well, they're jumping out there.
Yeah, was that? And they have a signal. Signal. Sometimes signal.
Sometimes.
That's all I had. Sorry. I, I could make that a free on a presentation.
All right, Michael.
Mr. Chairman, uh, so the farthest we have sixteen building permits, several issues, um, no building during court application. Aren't yet. Uh, planning commission, we have a few items on the planning commission on High Point in Southford, that's at President Lee Development, ex post office. Um, the, uh, the drive extension, uh, developer is actually coming in with, uh, but we're essentially calling and venting final plan to provide, uh, two phases, um, because Oak Drive is on, uh, hostility of A Builders, which is the other development back there, A Builders is not moving on that. Um, so, um, Fox Lane would like to move forward with two phases, one phase having a cul-de-sac plan for their development, so they uh, build their homes, and then, um, and then when the Oak Drive is, it's finally shut, then they could also base it, which is connection. And, uh, instruction of what is already approved, uh, by the board, so several years back. Um, so that'll be on planning commission, it's one, three fifty-five Mapleby Avenue preliminary land development plan took themselves off of, um, the December planning mission, subsequent planning commission meetings since then. Um, and so now they're on, uh, the February's agenda. Um, so that's. Also, the third thing would be the, uh, toments in township, and I, I've very set a special study for the sale of their, uh, sewer system. Um, that has to be renewed by, um, the local municipality instead, that facility, one of which is personal. Or suffer. So we'll be reviewing. And that's all I have.
Speaking of that issue.
Oh, it's, yeah.
Did anybody, any, anybody, we've talked about reaching out.
Was to reach out to, to his attorney, uh, he hasn't done it back.
Oh, yeah, I, I'll follow up with Jim.
Yeah. Just reach out to Bob, I know you're Lord Gallagher, about language charter related to, with Penn Water Authority.
It will follow up now.
The charter would prohibit the sale of any public facilities, sewer, potable water, or storm sewer to a non-governmental entity, which fine for the super storm sewer, and not that I want to sell more than Water Authority, but if it's in ten municipalities involved, you know, it's not to have one of the member municipalities, it'd be eliminating options. And we don't know if that was any intentional or oversight. I think I know what it is, but at least it'd be nice to get an answer, see what, if any avenues we have on.
Yeah, okay. But finally, disposition.
Yeah, yeah, so.
All right, very good. Thank you, Michael. Mr. Cavie.
Uh, I have nothing out of the manager's report. Good morning, Mr. Chairman. We do need, have a need for a very brief executive session, uh, awesome. Uh, item of possible litigation.
Oh, good. Mr. Chairman, one more thing to add here, um, in regard to, the other night, uh, Indian Valley Middle School had a dance, um, on my way out from the dance. I'm just curious, Tom, if you were notified or at least were notified, traffic situation with the dance at all?
With the dance in particular, there's a general issue of the, the core drop line.
Consider it all, but Mike, I'm going.
I, I, I put a little video, it's only about like two minutes, just to kind of give you guys an idea here. As I was pulling out here, and I've seen it before, but, um, I made a right down river coming out of Indian Valley, and, uh, the amount of traffic is lined the cars on both sides. What ended up happening is people were shooting down the middle lane, but there isn't a middle, that, that's one of the problems. We have a quick video, and cars essentially were just, it was like something in South Philly, you see the four ways going on in the middle.
We have a quick video and cars essentially were just, it was like something in South Philly, you see the four ways going on in the middle of the intersection, like literally straddling yellow lines, having kids jumped in and out. Um, and the meanwhile, I'm sitting there on a Groover, you know, going forward, I think the car in front of me that was going to make a left moves up at one point, sees a car coming at them and just goes straight across. Um, but yeah, you'll see, I don't know if you can play that or not.
I'm not yet, I.
No worries, if not, I can send it to you all, it's just, I'm just gonna show it to you on my phone.
Is it something different from, because of, do you think because of the struggling, uh, that's in there?
And that's, that's what I wanted to have.
I've been through the crapshoot of getting kids dropped off, like my programs there is.
That's what I wanted to say, I haven't seen, I haven't seen the difference, um, I think it's the same because we usually do come in one side, I would. Right, you or Ken. Did it before, but, you know, it, it was, it was, it was hard coming in, and I mean, I can just show you guys the video separately too, but I do have a quick video of even kids running.
I learned my lesson a long time ago, I get there about forty minutes early, just sitting apart.
That's what I did. Wow, then I made a mistake of making. But at one point, because I wasn't cutting across everybody, all of a sudden you see cars coming, you know, S U Vs flying out.
And you. Dance. What a, what a dancing, go, let's dance.
And I'm not just sharing.
One of the things they brought up. Old meeting. Was they would like us to resurrect a. Racing door. Right now we have zero. Uh, because of the line of cars, that's, and that's not what. Handle. They haven't policed the park.
Yeah, no, they're, are they? That's, that's what I was curious.
We're in discussions and.
Shouldn't they be hiring someone?
Vince is, Vince is gonna, well, Frank's perspective was that we, we do it so well, that is, we should do it. Well, and very complimentary. But, uh, nonetheless, we, you know, Vince is going to be dealing with this, the, all the swarms, certainly that school. Is trained by us, but we know he's great. So we're trying to, you know, do a loop inside to get the cords off. The problem is the construction company, I think, is going to go on a section in the back.
Yeah, we gotta take those temporaries down and they gotta do other things, it's just a little event for another year.
Kind of try to come up, but I don't know, uh, one way in, one way out, somehow get them off a highway first.
Yeah, I mean, I know they don't usually do it, but they don't circulate them around the back of the building to back out, to go back out, that might be a way at least temporarily do that.
It's an issue, yeah. I'm sure there was, but if you're with bus traffic, there you go.
Well, they're, they're saying kids are getting out of the passenger side of the car and go a certain direction.
That's what I meant, like, it's like.
It's about like an Indian Valley activity.
Yeah, and this is, I mean, I've seen it before, I never recorded before, there's no sound, it's just a lot of honks and a few, the old familiar.
Was this the point where you were wishing you had made a left turn?
Yes. You can see, I was, like, a shoot right down the middle, and it gets to the point where in the middle of the interstate, you know, they're colliding at the top of Groover and. And that, that was my question, I know they have police, I don't know if something that they coordinate with us, or you could see that, it's a lot of work for us.
This is really a topic for the school district.
Yeah, I think so. I think if we could reach out to them and just.
If they're gonna have events, they want at least coordinating.
There's, as I get closer, you'll see cars going by, it's pretty much all the same, I did catch some of the kids running, but the problem is, is you'll see this guy was going to make the left goes because there's a white truck coming up here, sitting there, they just picked up their kids as well. And it's, it, I didn't, you know, record the whole time, but there were a lot of kids running by, I realized when they're starting to pick up, you can see the car sitting there, the four ways on over there. That's pretty much just it, I think I have one other clip of some of the kids walking by. That car there just picked up a whole bunch of kids. Yeah. So that's, that's, that's pretty much it, I just wanted to know if we could reach out to them, or, you know, obviously it's something, I think the next clip you'll see is the cars just starting to pass me while I was waiting there.
It looks like the continuation of the same problems.
Yeah.
Covered.
Okay.
Anything else, anyone else? All right. We'll move to executive session.